He might have a different plan.
You'll have to wait and see.
Of course Bishop's in hot standby, he's always with you. He never met a mic he didn't like. Now how can you fall off? And with that being said, it's two o'clock. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to open the public input period for the 2022 proposed budget. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our acting and reigning CEO Dave Churchman to take the lead and announce the players.
All right, well, this will be a quick handoff. I'll turn it over to Jeff Bishop, our CFO, and John Mertlik, our senior manager of FPNA. So turn it over to the experts here.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Larry. Welcome, everyone. We're excited to talk to you about the 2022 budget. Excited to get feedback. Before I pass it over to John, John will go through, obviously, the detailed materials, key initiatives, outcomes of the effort. I did want to take a few moments just to talk about the process that we've taken on, the improvements that we've had, both from a process and outcome perspective. As folks are aware, obviously, our budget and the process coalesces to deliver on the Vision 2021 goals and objectives that have been set forth by the Commission. What I wanted to do again was really talk about some of the efforts that have been underway to improve that, the efforts to deliver on that, so we can ensure that we're getting the outcomes that we want. And, you know, when you look at the budget itself, you're going to look at, see a bunch of different numbers that are provided in terms of the content in the presentation, but it's important to understand what all goes into those numbers. There is a process that's been underway, and I'll look to John to confirm this, but we've been at it since early Q2. So we've been doing this for well over six months, starting with our fundamental assumptions, looking at specifically what load growth is going to be within the district, working with our load forecasting team, large power solutions team, gathering that data, working on our wholesale forecast, how do we plan to hedge the wholesale risk that we have as an entity moving forward, not only what's already hedged today, but what do we plan to have? How do we plan to execute that five years from now? Taking into account things such as CETA, the Clean Energy Transformation Act, our FERC license requirements relative to how we operate our dams, how we operate our recreational areas, those are all elements that get fed into the process that we use to develop the budget. In terms of some of the additional work that's been done, we've really gone much more to a zero-based level of budgeting. We have all the dollars detailed down in terms of cost categories, labor, O and M capital, much greater in terms of level of granularity than we've ever had in the past. And I think folks will appreciate that, that they've gone through it, both in terms of the people that have developed that FPNA and their counterparts relative to those folks in the district who participate in the effort, but also the work that we've done with senior management, as well as the commissioners, to provide them great levels of detail regarding the composition of the numbers that are presented here in the budget. As it relates to some of the newer processes that I don't think John will necessarily call out as part of the budget presentation, I do think it's noteworthy, and I do want to thank the team for pulling this together, the FPNA group, but also notably the people within the business. They're the folks that actually pulled together the detailed business cases. That's something that's been new for this year in terms of producing any additional dollars whereat that were requested, O and M, labor or capital. We had business cases pulled together, and that was done enterprise-wide. So it wasn't done just for specific organizations, for specific people. It was done across the board, and then we utilized those and measured against a standard. So I think in terms of the overall process, making sure that we're, as an entity, able to look at the processes that we've put into place to ensure the outcomes are value accretive, that's been a heavy focus this year, and it will continue to be a focus. We'll get better at that as we continue to improve over time. But again, appreciate the leadership of the FPNA team, working with management members to get those pieces pulled together. So again, we can show that the investments that we're making into the business are value accretive. So ultimately, we get the right outcomes for our customers. When we talk about outcomes, I think it's useful to highlight, you know, we continue to be in a very strong position. Our strong load growth has enabled us to have a strong financial position. And what does that mean for us as an organization? It allows us to invest in our people. You'll note that we've got, with the continued investment that we have in organizational development, tuition reimbursement, leadership training, career development. We continue to invest in building out and finishing up our fiber program, and also invest in our critical assets for tomorrow, but also from a long term, you'll see that we continue to have a strong financial position. So we're fortunate with where we're at as a district. We'll continue to plow ahead in terms of the budgeting effort, but are excited, I'm excited to pass it over to John, so he can walk us through the results of the effort. And I really want to thank everyone for all the hard work that John, his team, I know we've got Craig Elise on here, others. We've got key counterparts in operations, as well as all the people at the district that get involved in the effort. It truly is an enterprise-wide effort, as those are the folks that actually deliver the outcomes for our customers. So with that, John, I'll pass it over to you, and excited to go through the presentation.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Can folks see the presentation on the screen?
Yes, we can, John.
Excellent. Well, thank you for the introduction, Jeff. Just one more time, I'm John Mertlik, Senior Manager of Financial Planning Analysis, and I'm going to walk through the 2022 proposed budget for Grant County PUD. So we've run through a lot of this detail already with senior management, along with the commissioners. So there shouldn't be any new items that pop up here. This is for our public outreach. If folks do have questions, you'll, there'll be some natural breakpoints in the presentation, but please feel free to ask them. Because I'm presenting, sometimes it's hard for me to see the questions. So if one of the EXOs sees a hands raised, maybe just nudge me so that I make sure I answer. And with that, we'll jump into the presentation. All right. So we're going to break our discussion of the budget into four components. We'll talk about budget initiatives and process. Jeff alluded to a number of those items, but we will drill down and talk about that. Also talking about our strategic initiatives. Those are the management directives that we're taking on for 2022 that we believe will drive value for the business. And we'll talk quite a bit about how we decided on those particular initiatives. Then we'll walk through a summary of our results. And then finally, we'll touch on Appendix A and Appendix B. Maybe Appendix B if we have time. Appendix A has our financial scenarios. So it illuminates all the major volatile inputs that could impact the district's financial performance and what we can identify as those risks in terms of our financial metrics, if those things were to occur. Appendix B is some more detail associated with the capital plan. Last year, we had that included as an FYI. It's included as an FYI. If I have time, we'll dive into it. So with that, so our first stop here is to look at how we do our planning. And this is a bit conceptual, but we essentially have two objectives. Number one is provide value to our customers. And that's not just current value, that's current and future customers. So we're not looking for short-term optimization. We're looking at optimizing over the long term. As we know, the utility is going to serve Grant County for a long, long time. The second one, and that is mirrored up to the first objective, is maintain the utility's financial health. A healthy utility is one, financially healthy utility is one that doesn't have to rely on rate increases over and over and over again. It's one that minimizes the rate increases that it needs to take out to its customers. Now, with that said, what we've got there in those four boxes, I'll call that our planning management circuit. So invest in assets. So namely, that's invest in the right assets with the right timing. Invest in the key technology that helps us optimize those assets. Then actively contain and control costs. If you can do those three things, and you can do it over and over again, you'll minimize the need for rate increases over time. So I think of this as our, again, our planning management circuit, and we just really try and focus on doing that well, over and over and over again, here at the district. So major budget initiatives in the budget process. So what do our customers want? Well, coming from our 2019 customer satisfaction survey, our number one, our number one item here is provide reliable electric power with few outages. So that's this emphasis on on power quality and minimizing the number of maximizing reliability and minimizing disruptions to what amounts as a highly valued good for people's lives. Number two, customer service. Number three, provide real-time information, communication on energy and use and outages. Keeping electricity prices as low as possible. So relating it back to our first slide in the planning management circuit, making the right investments and assets at the right time, along with optimizing them with technology, is the way we deliver on these top priorities of our customers. So Jeff alluded to some of our major budget initiatives for 2022, and here's a bit more detail on that one. Number one, and we always keep this in mind, that again, parts back to our planning and management circuit, Grant PUD's financial position. So we keep that paramount at the top. So whatever comes to the forefront, we're always going to keep an eye to how do we manage through this process and keep a financially healthy utility. Number two, in this year's budget, we expanded our cost attributes to include asset type. Now, this is a bit in the weeds in terms of the financial modeling that goes on for our people's budgets, but it's important because it moves us closer to our end goal of being able to match up our budgets with our general ledger. And this has been a multi-year process since we started the data optimization project, is that we knew we couldn't do it all at once. And so each year, we've layered on another level of detail into our budgeting process. And this year, we layered on asset type, and that gets us that one step closer to matching up budgets with the ledger. Number three, expansion of detailed project data. So in 2021, we developed monthly and cost category level data for all the capital projects across the district. So at any given point in time, and this doesn't define everything that we expect to be able to get done, but it does define our whole universe and breadth of work. There's approximately 200-plus projects that could be in various stages of execution or planning. Those projects, it's hard to make a decision on what should go forward, what should maybe be put off for a longer term, unless you have the data that helps you understand those decisions. This year, we brought on a consistent, uniform method for putting that data in a system that allows us to roll it up to the capital portfolio level and drill down into monthly cost category type detail, along with identifying starts and stops, and if the project has, can be moved out in time or not. So that was another significant incremental maturity to this year's budget process. Number four, and Jeff's already alluded to this, this was the introduction of the business case process to identify strategic initiatives. So this was a major change in how we looked at incremental asks for dollars in this year's budget. So at the beginning of round one, we looked out over all the asks at the business unit level, and we were able to indicate to them, this is an ask that's over and above the expectation. And so the ask will need to be justified with a business case. And I'll talk about round one versus round two versus round three in a moment. But during round one, we identified 78 business cases. That got whittled down as we started around two to 16. And then at the end of round two, that was whittled down to three, perhaps we call it 3.5 cases, that we ended up moving forward with, and that define our strategic initiatives for the 2022 budget. And then the last piece there, detailed budget data available for review. So just piggybacking on Jeff's comment, this is the first year where we've really been able to roll the data out and have it in a usable format at a detailed level, where people could dive into line items. And it's been quite the achievement, I think, to be able to put that out there and let people drill into the data to see what is there. The commission got to see that data. The CXOs got to see that data during the budget process. So that was a really significant iterative maturity level for us here at the district. All right, talking about the 2022 budget process. So we break the budget into three rounds. Round one is the business unit focus. So this is a bottom-up approach. We reach out to all the business units across the district, and they put together their O and M and labor requests or needs for the coming year. When that's done, again, noting that any of those asks that were incrementally more than the expectation for 2022 had to be justified with a business case. At the end of round one, and us standing up all that data and compiling it, each of the business unit managers comes into the presentation, one of the CXOs, and there's a two-day review process. After that two-day review process, there's a, we had an initial screening of those business cases. We did another review with the EXOs, and that's where we whittled it down from the 78 to the 16. We also developed what we thought were the cases that weren't going to move forward. We put in that expectation for those business units to get their budgets back in line with the original expectation. That starts round two. Round two, that's where we layer on the capital plan. We also gather up all the updates that would otherwise be refinements to the data, any outstanding questions from round one. And then we turn to doing the final selection of those business cases. And those are based on what we believe is the most valuable and the highest priority for the district. And then right now, we're in round three. So this is the public outreach process. The next part of that is the budget adoption, which should happen in November. So for those who like a graphical representation, here's that round one, round two, round three. That's, doesn't encompass everything that happens with the budget. Mostly, it's a function of FPNA, but also extending to other elements of finance, along with senior management, is to do the planning for the budget year. And for FPNA, that starts in January and runs all the way until we essentially kick off round one. And then round one runs through June and July. Round two runs from August to the middle of September. And then round three is, as we begin to prepare those documents, one of which you're looking at now, runs until the budget is adopted sometime in early, by early December, if not before then. So I'm not going to go through a ton of this detail here. It's there if you're interested in seeing all the steps. But for the FPNA folks and some other parts of finance, that's a, it's a January to December job. All right. It's strategic initiatives. So the first strategic initiative that was identified was the need for another layer of management for hydro generation. So that's going to be the establishment of a hydro generation senior manager. Oneopum Dam, Priest Rapids Dam, and Oneopum Maintenance Center will report to that senior manager. As you heard from Ty, I believe, earlier today, there was a recognition at power production that the leadership often struggled to do a lot of the strategic work because they didn't have the, either the resources or the time to make that happen. The idea here is that with this extra level of management, that some of that strategic work will now be able to be done by the senior manager of hydro generation. And likewise, to cascade some of the other work that maybe wasn't being able to be focused on down to the other managers at Oneopum Dam, Priest Rapids Dam, and the Oneopum Maintenance Center. Now, the primary benefit we looked at for this business case was this increase in net wholesale benefit. With the idea that, that with this layer of management, we would be able to better optimize and efficiently reduce planned outage periods, periods, along with maintenance work. Driving that net wholesale benefit, that's a direct financial offset to budget performance, as well as operational performance. So that's one of the ways that it shows immediate dollar benefit for the district. Also, again, with the cascading to the next rung down in management, there can be a focus on safety, compliance, and operational needs. And the hope is that will benefit the risk profile of hydro operations. The next strategic initiative is asset management. Now, I said 3.5, so there was actually two business cases, and to some degree, these have been combined through the budget process. There's an asset management team for power delivery and an asset management team, power production. The long-term goal here is that there would be a single asset management team across the district. But with that said, at the current stage of maturity of both organizations, it was seen that these would be separate right now. The benefit that this drives is harking back to our, our planning management circuit, is to optimize the assets that we actually not only have in place, but that we invest in. So if we can do a very good job in the installation, inspection, and maintaining of our assets, we minimize costs associated with refurbishment and replacement. Those activities, refurbishment, replacement, they're very expensive if they're done at an unknown failure time. So it's a lot more cost-effective to be inspecting, installing, and maintaining the equipment on an asset-managed basis than it is to do this when these items just fail. Again, the results that we're looking to drive with the addition of the asset management groups is better decision-making. That's going to require to stand up a data process and gather data that also will allow the ability to measure. If you don't have the data, it's hard to measure. Also, this ensures that what we have in place as asset continues to drive value to customers. So again, it's the high cost of replacement or refurbishment, and we're trying to minimize those costs. And our third strategic initiative is the establishment of a long-range resource planning function within the wholesale marketing supply team. This team is expected to work pretty closely with risk of FPNA, power production, power delivery. We'll touch on the load growth later in the PowerPoint. The load growth is a pretty significant driver here at the district. Over the last 15 years, there's been a recognition that at some point, Grant County will move through the Priest Rapids Project's available resources, and that we'll need to be looking at additional resources to balance our requirements. It's likely that, you know, right now, we're focusing on some early discovery efforts with a small modular nuclear reactor. That'll be mentioned later in presentation. But also, it's through the integrated resource plan that this gets the attention it deserves. And that will be a focus of this long-range resource planning function. And they're not simply going to only evaluate, you know, one type of asset, an SMR. They're going to analyze any new generation builds, power purchase agreements, demand-side response, or distributed generation. Again, the vision here is that they'll lead the development for better planning and analysis. And they'll lead us to making more efficient and more valuable of resource choices, ones that we know we're facing sometime in the next 10 years. And then our final strategic initiative is the one that, since I arrived at the district, we've been driving. This is enterprise technology and the modernization effort. So in many cases, this covers both information technology and operational technology. For enterprise technology, the organization covers software engineering and architecture, network engineering, telecom, service desk, platform operations, enterprise applications, operational technologies spread throughout the rest of the district, key 2022 results and starts. So the Gen 2 project, that's got a mid-year delivery date, I believe in July. That's a significant upgrade to the design capability with real-time access for fiber and electric system crews. It's got built-in GIS integration. It should be a very significant increment in maturity for our organization. Number two is EMS. So that's a replacement of the energy management system. The current EMS system is, I believe, seven-plus years old. It doesn't have some of the standard core functions, such as the AGC, Automatic Generation Control, which is noted here. In a, in a future world where the utilities in the Northwest will all be either in a coordinated day-ahead market or an either in a coordinated day ahead market or an energy imbalance market, having those capabilities built into EMS is a must. The next is the mobile workforce management. This is a mobile dispatch tracking coordination tool used between workforce and the power delivery line crews and customer service. It allows for real-time tracking and moving information back and forth between those two teams. The next bullet, technology infrastructure modernization. So this is, I'm, I'm going to read this. And if people have questions, they really will have to go and ask Darren Bloom because as much as I'd like to say I understand it, I don't. So, "Go live for hyper-converged data set, data center infrastructure, optical backbone core, cyber infrastructure, business ethernet network and related tools for monitoring, alerting, configuration management. Provides a high-performance scale or reliable and cost-efficient environment for the foreseeable future." So I think that is IT code for we're moving the enterprise forward in a cost-effective way. Now, the last one I, I, I do understand and that's replacement of our, our core financial system and the supply chain modernization. So we're currently on the Microsoft Great Plains finance system. Microsoft has let folks know that that will be sunsetted, I believe, in 2025. So we have a limited amount of time on that system. With that said, it also, at least as it was configured when we put it together, it doesn't have a lot of the capabilities that a modern core financial system has, which is an inventory warehouse, supply chain coordinated tool. So that will be an item that will, as is noted in the bullet point, be a multi-year effort. That tends to be a very long horizon project because you can't do it all at once. You have to do it piece by piece over a few years. So I'm going to pause right there and because I think I've said a lot before I jump into summary of results.
You were just getting warmed up, John.
All right. All right. So summary of results, I'm, I'm going to skip to the second slide. So for 2022, what we're proposing is a total expenses before offsets of $397.5 million. As you'll see, there's four components in this table. There's the O and M expense, there's the capital expense, there's debt service along with taxes. So going back up that operations and maintenance total there, that 156.9 million broken out between the electric system and the PRP system. The electric system is responsible for approximately 43% of that. The PRP system, approximately 57% of that. As you'll see on the O and M side, budget over budget, so that's 2022 versus 2021. On the electric system side, that's a $7.5 million increase versus a $2.8 million increase when you're looking just at our current year projection for 2021 and where we think we're going to be for 2022. As you can see, for directs, that is a fairly flat number, very small increase, 1.7 million. Budget versus budget, the increase is driven on the labor side. There's an embedded assumption change there about our labor to cap number. And I'll talk about that later when we get into exhibit A and exhibit B. You see the same pattern at the Priest Rapids project. So a fairly flat between budget versus budget and budget versus 2021 year in projection. But you do see, you do see that, that increase, that $5.4 million increase there. Budget over budget between what we're projecting for 2022 and what we have for our 2021 budget. And again, that's that embedded assumption about our labor to cap number. Relatively flat and to a large degree out of our control on our taxes. Moving over to capital. Our current expectation for 2022 is that we'll spend 145.4 million to deliver our capital in 2022. This is fairly consistent between 2021 budget and, and current expectations. A little bit higher than what we're expecting for our current year projections. It's, it's fairly significant on the electric system. And as we move through the PowerPoint, you'll see the load growth is the, the driver there. Also note that historically, the spend between the PRP system and the electric system has been more heavily allocated towards the PRP system. That is something that's starting in, in 2020 in the actuals reversed. And we expect that to be the pattern with the high load growth on the electric system for the foreseeable future. Electric system direct capital, we have a breakdown of this as we move through the slides. Seventy eight point six million dollars for the PRP direct capital, that's $42 million. You layer on the capital labor for the electric system. That's a $90.1 million estimate. Layer on the 13.4 million for PRP capital labor. Drives a $55.3 million estimate. And debt service is, is largely flat. That's a decrease versus previous years back to 2019. And that's a function of the finance optimization, which was executed by Treasury Group last year. So diving down into some of the details. So I'll preface this with, this is a, a stylized view of, of the entity. If we go and try and pull the numbers to match up directly to how the business units are organized here at the utility, they won't match these numbers, but the way that we put this functional organization together, it makes it sort of an anywhere USA utility look. And so it's very comparable to any other utility. So administratum general, if we were in the IOU space, this would be the corporate services. The power delivery, if we were in the IOU space, this would be the disco. If we were in the power, power production, if we were in the IOU space, this would be genco. So across the whole district, that 42%, that represents approximately $66 million of this 157 million. Power production, that 36% represents approximately $57 million. And the power delivery of 22%, that represents approximately $34 million. In terms of, of the cost category type breakdown, labor accounts for about 59%. Purchase services, 22%. General administrative, 7%. Operating materials and equipment, approximately 5%. Information technology, 4%. Risk, 2%. Transportation, 1%. Now, this is net of labor to capital. Just keep that in mind. So next level of detail down, power production. So again, if, if wholesale marketing at Grant County PUD isn't directly part of power production, again, it's a stylized view of the world. With that said, we'll start at Fish and Wildlife. So that 26% represents about $15 million. Engineering, 13% represents about $7 million. Lands and recs, 8% represents $5 million. Cultural resources at 6% represents $3 million. Wholesale marketing represents another $3 million. And then maintenance and ops represents $24 million. Looking at it in terms of those cost category types, labor represents 57%. Purchase services, 27%. General and administrative, 11%. Operating materials and equipment, 5%. Fairly on an order of magnitude basis, de minimis costs for IT, risk and transportation for power production. Moving on to power delivery. Starting with fiber crew, that 30% represents $10 million. Engineering, 16% represents $6 million. The dispatch, 15%, that represents $5 million. And construction and maintenance represents about $13 million. Cost category type look, that $34.3 million. Labor represents 78%. Purchase services represent 10%. General administrative represents 1%. Operating materials and equipment represents 11%. And then similar to power production on an order of magnitude basis, these are quite small numbers. Contribute almost percentage-wise, little to the 34.3 million. Moving on to administrative in general. So starting with employment services, that 12% represents $8 million. Customer solutions represents $7 million. Risk audit compliance at 7% represents $5 million. Finance, that 5% represents approximately $3.3 million. The EPMO and EPPM function, that represents another $3.3 million. External affairs at 4% represents $2.6 million. General management, that 9% represents $6 million. And then the two larger functions, internal services at 25% represents about $17 million and IT at 22 represents $15 million. Looking at it on cost category type basis, at $66.1 million. Labor is 52% of it. Purchase services is 24% of it. GNA is 6% of it. Operating materials and equipment, 2% of it. And the bulk of that information technology, risk, transportation dollars are found in this administrative in general. For IT, 9% of that $66.1 million, that's IT. That 3 million for risk, it's about 5%. And transportation represents 3%. All right, before I dive into capital, I'll pause again. So what we're looking at here is we're looking at direct capital. So for 2022, our capital expenditure expectation is $121 million. Now, what you've got here is you've got a comparison between what we had in our, our current look, the 120.5 or 121 versus 2021. And this is broken out across one of the ways that we, we, we measure the portfolios. And that is the run, grow, transform methodology. So I'm going to be jumping into detail at the electric system and the PRP system levels. So I'm not going to cover off a lot of these sub-portfolios here. But the sub-portfolios are the way we, we divide up our capital portfolio. So this first category here, run plus fitness purchases, characterize that as that's your operate, maintain your, your system. So that is, that is your operational capital. Your grow is enhance and expand your, your system. So it's not necessarily doing something new that you don't do, it's just doing more. And then transform is, that is actually doing something new. So that's, that's, that's the innovate and derive characterization. As you expect for a utility, it's, it's dominated by the operational capital. So you know, you're, you're looking at approximately 80% being operational capital. Again, I'm not going to dive into these numbers because I'm about to do that on the next page. We, we are looking at an increase in capital spend for 2022 versus the 2021 budget. This 120.5 is closer to our, our current 2021 expectation, but it is an increased budget over budget. All right. So diving into some of the detail on the electric system capital. So first off, fiber system, those numbers are embedded here in the electric system. This includes the fiber expansion project, which goes through 2024. But we expect to spend upwards of $40 million to close out that project. Also included is broadband customer connect. So that's the work that continues even after the, 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 the expansion project ends. Talked a bit about the load growth and we'll have another slide on that in a moment. The retail growth has been very significant in Grant County. To meet this growth, there's, there's two strategies. One is, is the building assets. And, and this is, harks back to our, our planning management circuit, but building the right things with the right timing. That's design build two, which we call DB2. Expansion project or QTEP. And then we've got two customer engagement functions. One is the large power solutions and the other is our transmission interconnections. And transmission interconnections, those are folks who just want either on our system to sell to an existing customer. We have a, a large solar, a customer that wants to do that or just someone who wants to connect to our transmission system. Starting over in the left-hand corner, this is for 2022. Starting over in the left-hand corner, uh, this is for twenty-twenty-two, that's seventy-eight point six million dollars of direct capital. You can see that number stays relatively flat through the twenty-twenty-six planning period, decreasing to seventy-six point six million, uh, by twenty-twenty-six. Um, the bar graphs are informative of how we expect to spend that money. So, um, yeah, nearly fifty percent of it is, is expected to be spent on transmission and distribution work. Um, nearly thirty percent is expected to be spent on wholesale fiber work. Uh, the facilities work accounts for sixteen percent, technology three and a half percent. Um, the S M R accounts for one point six percent. That's one of those numbers that is a, a bit difficult to nail down. The expectation is that you could spend significantly more than that, or you could spend significantly less than that. Maybe it doesn't turn out to be a good deal, or it turns out to be a great deal. And then one point two percent is associated with transportation. You can see, uh, the fiber shrinks after twenty-twenty-four, and that's associated with, uh, closing out the fiber expansion project. Again, here's our breakout of our run, grow, transform. You're, you're, you're looking at roughly seventy-five percent of the your capital spend is associated with operational capital, and twenty-five percent is associated with grow and transform. Other characteristics, um, a relatively, uh, less concentrated, um, core set of, of projects drive, um, the electric system. So, you've got ten projects, you'll see that when we jump to the P R P, the concentration of projects there on the P R P system, ten projects, um, drive approximately seventy percent of the seventy-nine million dollars. And, and as you move into the whole forecast period, the notable five that are noted here, uh, those are only represent twenty-two percent of expected spend of three hundred and eighty-six million. So we note some of the, the details of the very, I call them the notable projects. These are the significant ones that, um, you know, have been put in place. They're associated with Q T E P, or they're associated with continuing work, operational work that needs to be done. Also note, um, what we expect to spend in the forecast period on D B two, Q T E P, L P S and I Q, the referenced strategic means for us addressing our, our load growth. Um, you know, both the portfolio dollars and the project dollars. If someone has a detailed question on that, I can answer it. So we talked about, uh, the load growth. So this slide, you know, addresses, uh, that load growth as, as what we would expect normally based on the historical look at the world. So historically, from two thousand eight to twenty-twenty, we expect, uh, a long-term average growth rate of approximately three point six percent. Uh, what we're currently forecasting is that we're going to be, um, above that, and especially in the near term, significantly above that. So that, those green bars are your historic average. The orange line is the previous forecast, and the gray line is our current retail sales forecast. As you can see, in the front end of the current forecast, that's an accelerated growth rate versus the, uh, previous forecast. It's also accelerated versus the straight line. Another view of it here is just, uh, on a gigawatt hour basis, but you see the same pattern. So, uh, the gray, which is our current forecast, outpaces the orange, the previous forecast, and then starts to decelerate. Um, both of them by twenty-thirty are within a percentage point of each other. Uh, so they do, they nearly intercept out there, but in both cases, you've got two views of the world, um, one year apart, and both of them outpace our historic growth. So, um, that's, that's what the expanded spend on the electric system is addressing. Moving on to the Priest Rapids System Capital Plan. So, um, again, I've, I've noted that historically, um, utilities spent the most capital at the Priest Rapids Project, um, for the foreseeable future. Due to that, that load growth on the system, uh, that is, is likely to, to change and to stay that way for some time. Um, also, since the pandemic hit and, um, impacts of the, the supply chain, and we'll talk about the project concentration here in a second, um, the Priest Rapids, uh, Capital Plan has been more susceptible to those supply chain hits. Um, both the turbine generator and the embankment work has been delayed, um, twice now, uh, and, and with cost increases. So, to some degree, that's, um, s- some of it could be luck, but part of it is you've got a high concentration of projects, and so the impact will be greater if a supply chain issue impacts you because you've got a higher concentration of projects. So you've got less dispersion over many projects. With that said, jumping into some of the data, there's that forty-two million dollars of direct spend for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we do expect to see that increase over the forecast period to fifty-one point one million, add in twenty-twenty-six. Um, approximately sixty-six percent of that work is associated with powerhouse, twelve and a half with turbine generator, uh, nine percent with facilities, four and a half percent with technology, um, four percent with fish and wildlife, transportation three percent, and then recreation and licensing, a tiny little slice. So talking about that concentration of projects, you've got five projects in twenty-twenty-two that account for ninety percent of that forty-two million. And from twenty-twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, those notable five represent seventy percent of that two hundred and twenty-three million. And in fact, if you just look at, uh, project one, two, and three, that would be sixty-five percent uh, of, of that two hundred and twenty-three million dollar spend expectation. All right, in our slide on our offsets, um, contributions in native construction, these are the monies that are paid by customers to build infrastructure. Um, um, we're fairly conservative in this estimate at eight point three million. Sales to power purchases at cost, uh, this is, um, in line with, uh, our last auction, uh, twenty-two point three million, net power, uh, eighty-one point five million. Uh, this is a function of our net wholesale activity along with our sliced contracts. Conservation loans, very small at a hundred thousand dollars, total offsets a hundred and twelve point three million, and that gets us to a total expenses after offsets of two hundred and eighty-five point three million. So moving on to exhibit A. So, there's our one fifty-six point nine million, there's our taxes of nineteen point five million, there's our ninety point one million of electric system capital, our fifty-five point three million of P R P capital, our debt service of seventy-five point seven million. That gets us to our three ninety-seven point five with our offsets of one twelve. That gets you to your two eighty-five point three. Um, to note here, and this is where I'll talk about our labor to cap. We had a, a, a longer-term assumption that our labor to cap would come in at approximately eighty-twenty. Um, on this slide, that would have moved, uh, six million dollars out of O and M and into labor associated with capital here, so it wouldn't have an overall impact. But on our next slide, if we were still at that eighty-twenty rate, we would be decreasing this one fifty-six point nine million by that six million. Instead, our assumption is in line with our current, uh, close history, and we are at, uh, eighty-six fourteen. So, we're, we're, we're carrying some extra operating expense from a longer-term historical perspective. That's an active, um, workflow for finance to address and to sharpen our pencils and double-check and make sure, um, we're using the correct methodology for doing that. If not, to either update our methodology or even replace it. So, that's something that we'll be looking at, uh, year over year. Also, this is the first time you've been able to see our, our retail energy sales forecasting, two hundred and thirty-six point one million in retail sales for twenty-twenty-two. That's looking for my notes, budget over budget, that's about a twenty-four million dollar increase um, versus our, our current twenty-twenty-one expectation, that's about a nine million dollar increase. So that's a, that's an increase in forecasted revenue that helps drive, um, this, this fairly robust for twenty-twenty-two net income number of seventy-six point two million dollars. So I will jump into the impact on the, on the metrics, and then I'll pause to see if I might have some questions. That seventy-six point two million dollars, um, and that's a, like I said, that's a very robust number for twenty-two compared to, uh, uh, our expectation based on, on last year's budget. Um, you know, that's a, that's a, a, nearly a twenty-nine million dollar, uh, betterment in, uh, compared to twenty-twenty-one. That's, that's very in line with, uh, our expectations for where we're going to finish twenty-twenty-one. This drives us meeting our liquidity metric of a hundred and five million. It drives us exceeding our, our, our day's cash on hand, uh, metric by ninety-four days. Also meeting our debt service coverage metric at two point four versus the one point eight. Our consolidated debt to plant ratio of less than or equal to sixty percent, beating it by, by nearly fifteen percent. Uh, where we still struggle is, uh, our profitability metrics. We don't expect that, even with the current budget and how robust that net income number is, that we will beat our, our, our metric for return on net assets at four percent, um, or retail operating ratio at less than equal to one hundred percent.
You ready to move on?
I can move on.
I know we don't have any public on, John. I know that disappoints you because you're planning on a plethora of people joining in on this feeding frenzy on your financial. But we know you're doing. But we're still with you.
Okay, great. Well, we'll, we'll get to do this again at six o'clock too, so. All right, moving on to our scenarios. Uh, here we do six scenarios. Um, these scenarios cover, uh, three, uh, significant, uh, risks to the district. So wholesale price risk, uh, um, uh, load risk or, or, or retail sales risk and water risk. We break this, they're either combinations of, of those things put together, or in some cases, they're an isolated run. So with respect to wholesale prices, we do a high price and a low price case. We set that at that P eighty-five or P fifteen, uh, level. This indicates, you know, fifteen percent of the time, prices will be higher than that. Fifteen percent of the time, they'll be lower than the P fifteen case. Uh, so you're, you're, you're capturing something that corresponds to that, the breakeven on a standard deviation. Um, with retail sales, uh, we do a low load growth case. That's where we take our growth rate that we saw back in that, uh, previous slide, and we just cut it in half. So only half the new growth, uh, uh, happens. And then number four there, we conjoin that with our, our low price case. On the theory that if, if, if loads came in across the board lower, everyone might be in a position that they have to sell, decreasing the, uh, uh, market, market price. And then with respect to, uh, water risk, uh, we do a low water case, again, associated with that bottom fifteen percent. We do that as a single isolated number, and then we can join it with what we call counterparty stable to look at, um, our, our method of slicing up the project and how well it insulates us from the impact of low water. So, the first thing we'll look at is we'll look at our debt service coverage. Again, here our target is one point eight. As you can see, um, here's all our scenarios with the target defined as that blue bar. So, one point eight across, um, in our current plan, in all cases but two, and that's going to be the low water case. And for one year of the low load growth with low price case, we meet our debt service coverage metrics. So, in the low water case, we don't meet, and for the final year on the price decrease coupled with the low, low growth case, we don't meet that one point eight. However, as you can see, that dotted black line there, that's our counterparty stable. So that's where we assume that for every percentage that isn't already sliced out, we go and slice out the rest of the project. That's a very good hedge against that water risk because it meets the debt service coverage through the forecast period. Moving on to the debt to plant. Um, again, here's our target, less than sixty percent. And in this case, in every single case, we expect to be able to meet that metric in every single scenario. And that is, uh, uh, associated with, um, the benefits that were driven by financial optimization that pushed us to a point under our sixty percent that even in that low water case, we're still not getting back to our sixty percent, which is our upper threshold there. not getting back to our sixty percent, which is our upper threshold there. Now with, um, as I've already noted, with our, uh, profitability metrics, looking at the return on net assets, um, it, we don't meet the target, the target being, uh, that four percent in any one of the cases. The only case where we get close is where, uh, we mark, um, we mark the price curve up to that P eighty-five point. And then for twenty twenty-two, in that case, we get pretty close, you know, three point eight-two percent. So within shouting distance of that four percent target, but we never hit that target. And in fact, in that, uh, uh, water, that high water risk case, you can see for twenty twenty-two, twenty-five and twenty-six, uh, we even go negative. But again, our, our counterparty stable scenario where we test our, our method of slicing out, uh, the project is, uh, is an excellent insulation from that exposure. All right, um, so we're done with those scenarios. Uh, this is a, a, a refresh with the latest, uh, um, load forecast that, uh, shows in, in last year's budget, uh, we expected that our physical and financial rights would be excluded post-two thousand twenty-five. We're now expecting with the new load forecast in, and you remember that acceleration, uh, in the front years, that we would be exhausting our physical and financial rights at the end of two thousand twenty-four. So, um, you know, that's, that's the, you know, feeds back into one of our strategic initiatives, which is that long-term planning function and establishing it as, uh, the way we're going to go forward. Um, you know, we will be in need of resources and getting ahead of that and analyzing things is paramount for the utility. And moving on to appendix B. So, uh, these are some of the details for the capital that because of the size of the projects often just get, um, they kind of get buried when you're looking at the very, very large, uh, Priest Rapids project or the large, uh, electric system, DB two, QTep type projects. Because as you can see, they're not on the order of magnitude, um, in terms of, of cost, but they are highly impactful to the district. So the first one here is technology. This includes both the operational. Does somebody have a question? This includes both the operational technology and the information technology. Um, I'm not going to go into a ton of this detail because again, this is kind of an FYI for, for folks to, to look at and identify and say, oh, uh, here's, here's a little bit more detail behind some of those numbers. Got it for the technology portfolio. Uh, here's the internal services facilities portfolio. Again, you can see some of the detail around the service center and the E H Q remodel work. And then finally, uh, the fiber other, uh, this is dominated by fiber expansion along with the connectivity work. Um, and that's really, you know, other than the wholesale fiber OSS BSS project, which has a few dollars as they close that project out in the beginning of two thousand twenty-two, no impact. So it's really just those two projects. All right.
Well, John, you've, uh, you've baffled us again.
That is not the intent.
Oh, no, I'm just kidding you.
He meant dazzle.
Dazzle.
Okay.
Uh, I have to say, from my perspective, this is more of an in-depth look than we've had before. And, uh, I want to express my appreciation for you, uh, digging down deep and, uh, at least trying to get us on the same page as you are. Um, you know, it's taken a lot of work to do that with, with, uh, you know, you trying to help us with the, uh, the, all the spreadsheets and the stuff. So we're a work in progress, but, uh, we're getting a little friendly to us, so.
Perfect, well, let me know what I can do.
Work in progress. Hey, and I would like to put a heads up to Jeremy. I understand he had a little thing and tell him welcome to the club.
Yep, we're, uh, I'll, I'll reach out and extend that to Jeremy.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well, I guess one piece that I'd like to extend out, um, you know, to my, to my team is, is that, um, you know, I, I think I do lots of hand waving and they do lots of work. So, um, you know, a, a lot of, of thanks goes out to them. Uh, they're the ones who drive all the detail on that number, on the numbers that you see and are able to time out. So to Lisa Stites, to the E P P M team, Craig Kuntz, uh, and to Jeremy, you know, uh, my sincerest thanks. Uh, you know, this is a, like I said, this is a, a full-time job for us. Starts in January, ends in December. And we get a, we get Christmas and then we can start back up again.
Well, John, I'd like to congratulate you. I can see you, I mean, you guys put a lot of work into this, just this presentation, uh, and in so, in so much more, uh, detail than in the past. And, uh, we certainly appreciate it. Like I said, I appreciate the time you gave me to help, help me get into the spreadsheets and, and, uh, figure out how much I don't know. And, uh, like I said, you guys working with these things on a daily basis. It takes a special kind of, uh, concentration and attention to detail to, uh, to really get the job done. So thank you guys.
Thank you, Judy. Appreciate that.
I'd also like to appreciate, show my appreciation to your whole team. Believe me, you can show me anything, you're doing something and you guys are doing something. So it's pretty impressive, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, well, I don't see anybody on from the public, but I am going to make a comment if any public is on and would like to comment on the presentation or if you came in late, have any questions for John and company. Um, speak now or forever hold your peace. Or at least until six o'clock tonight. Okay. Well, John, thank you again, appreciate it. And team, um, Lisa and Craig and all the other ones that have done behind the scenes work. And I guess, John, you know, I always think of the movie Madagascar, you know, somebody has to smile and wave. So you just go ahead and smile and wave.
Yep. My, that's my job, Larry. Yep.
All right, Dave, um, what's your pleasure? I think we have an exec session at four. Would, um, Randall, can we accelerate that or do we have to stay on four of units teams?
You can start it whenever you want to. It's just on your calendar for four. So that's where you'll grab the link to join the meeting, but you could start it right now. You could take a five-minute break, whatever it is. I just need you to announce what time you plan to start it and how long it will last and for what the purposes are.
Okay, so let's start it at three thirty. That gives us eleven minutes, we can have a little break. Um, I can reach out to Mitch, I know he's, uh, tied up, um, at a trial right at the moment, but to let him know we're going to start at three thirty. It'll be for, um, pending litigation and performance of a district employee.
And for how long?
Um, possibly an hour and a half. So five at the latest, we'll let you know if we get done early. We all have to get home because we got to be back on teams at six o'clock.
Right.
Or John's going to be maybe talking to himself.
I'll be there for him.
Well, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I did just get an update from Jeff. He had, uh, he had, uh, sounded like a, a house situation with involving water. So he may not be able, he may not be able to join us for executive session. Uh, he was sounding scrambling a bit, so hopefully, uh, he gets that button down quickly. Okay, he may not be there.
Okay. Well, let's, um, let's target three thirty anyway, okay, Dave?
Yep, that's perfect, yeah, absolutely. And if we need, if we need, uh, Paul to check in on anything, he's available as well, so.
Okay, sounds good, we will see you at three thirty. Thank you, Randy. Yes.
Are you going to contact Rich then or do you want me to let him know?
Um, I'll, I'll shoot him a text quick and I'll shoot Mitch a text.
Okay.
Let them know. And then, um, as far as the purpose of this meeting goes, let's see, I forget how we do that. We're just continuing until six o'clock tonight?
Yeah, we're just going to recess, we'll recess at the end of the exec meeting and resume at six P M.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have one minute for a question after this?
Yep.
Okay. So I've got the docs prepared for the, um, approval.